Ridley, here. Janet?
Here.
Kramer?
Here.
Ritzman?
Here.
Wasner? That's enough.
Hey, it's pretty hot in here. Public comment on agenda items? Is there any public comment on the agenda items? Okay, we are skipping down to number six to begin the things we can get Clayton here and out of here. Probably gonna go bowling or chase a grandkid somewhere around Sheboygan County. How many grandkids you got off playing sports? Four. You guys, you and every flipster of a man-to-man to his own defense now, didn't you? I'd like to introduce Kate McGovern, he's our assessor, he's gonna answer some questions. So, you're just waiting for questions, or do you have to say?
Just, I talked with Bobby yesterday about this, I was convening with Ellen Berg on Thursday night, and she sent me the questionnaire that you sent him. And I just threw together a little hacky deal, I guess, real quick. She gave me an idea of what assessing field does in every unit of government in the state of Michigan. And one of the things you guys were talking about is a business model. There's no real business model in assessing, it's just simply, you know, doing the job of fieldwork, data entry, deeds, and transfer of payments, and dealing with those type of things. You're always dealing with people that are doing things such as claiming a principal residence in Sheboygan Township, and also claiming a principal residence in Detroit or wherever the case may be. And those are being analyzed all the time by the Department of Treasury, they got a crew that does that. So there's stuff that's out of our hands that we don't do, but when you find it, you have to, you know, deny and make them unhappy, but that's just part of the process. So, if you guys wanna just kinda read that thing and review it, and see if you got anything on there you wanna discuss any further, 'cause most of it's just pretty simple stuff.
And Mr. McGovern, first of all, thanks for coming, I really appreciate you giving a part of your Saturday. The assessor present in the office. You know, I just personally feel that every time we put out an ad or an RFP that says somebody has to be in the office, it just restricts the number of people that may apply. And I know that there's a shortage of assessors. What do the other assessors do? I know we have, what, two or three others in that county?
Uh, there's more than that, but typically, they are all non-offices. You know, they work out of their homes. I have found in the past, with the PR part of assessing, you know, it's fieldwork, obviously, and then when people wanna get ahold of you, they want a phone number. They don't necessarily wanna have you in front of them. I've found that more and more and more and more, they don't care. I have people that bring in veterans exemptions to me. I just put a mailbox outside, and I tell them when they call me, just drop it in the mailbox. They, they don't wanna really interact that much, they just wanna get rid of their business and go about what they're doing.
So, so should we, like, when we get a new assessor, should we, like, print up a card with that person's name and email and phone number?
Sure, yeah.
So, the people at the window could, could hand it out?
Yeah, you'll put it on the website.
Yeah, okay.
Make contact information available.
I didn't put yours on the website, though.
No?
I'll wait.
Okay.
And then on the land divisions and combos, I, I reached everybody on that list, except for one, the Phillips family. So I'm gonna go, I called them twice, I don't even know if they're in town, but I'm gonna go knock on their door. But they gotta get it done by December 31st, right?
Well, typically, yes, it just depends upon, I know you guys are putting your DDA together. We can combine properties up to March border review without any problem.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, 'cause you can, we can do it at the border review.
And then going down to this monthly report, what I'm reading here is, that's overkill. What would you really recommend, semi-annually?
Quarterly.
Quarterly?
Yeah. It, it doesn't matter, it's repetitious is what it is, because you're constantly just adding deeds, you're constantly adding data, you're constantly going out in the field. Yeah, but in the software itself, there's a, a place in there for inspection date. You can put that in there, and if you physically, you know, visited that site, which Cherry does, she puts in an inspection date, you can actually index on it, see what's going on that way as far as, you know, looking at what record cards have actually been done on-site. There's digital images, there should be an Apex sketch within there, I mean, there's a lot of information that should be in there.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just trying to look something with, like, three bullets. Semi-annually. What would those three bullets be, what would be the most important thing, the 20%? Where are we?
Yeah.
So in other words, that, what percentage are we today? This, this year?
Yeah, the situation of the 20%, that could be, you know, in the middle of summer, it might be 90 degrees every day, 100% humidity, so they feel worse, you get people agitated more at that time than any time, because they're not real happy to start with it, it's 90 degrees, 100% humidity, so you might back off and say, "I'm gonna wait till next week to start again," and you might get two days in, who knows? But when you get started, typically, like, and you get in the city here, you can go through a lot of properties in a hurry, because they're one right after the other, you don't have to be jumping in your car and moving to the next property. Lakefront property's the same thing. You get in the rural environment, and every time you, you gotta go to the next property, it's a drive, so it slows everything down, but...
So, so what, that's one thing, the 20%, what would the other two be?
Well, where you are with just keeping up with everything as far as, you know, data entry, land divisions, combinations, and all that stuff.
So, number of land divisions and combos?
Well, it's not the number of land divisions, either completed.
Yeah.
You know, you, you're actually allowed 45 days.
Okay.
And that's for approval, if the land division is filled out correctly. So you have 45 days to approve or deny. And typically, what I do is if there's something missing, I've, you know, you always got a phone number, you just call them and say, "What, what are you missing?", and tell them what it is, and get that information, do the land division. I mean, I, I got a land division yesterday morning, and it's already done.
Yeah, well, you did the one I asked you to do in five minutes.
Well, that was a combination.
Yeah, three minutes or so.
Those are easier, but land divisions themselves take a lot of time.
And then, um, in, in the past, we've had no job description, but we've had an employment agreement. Do we really need an employment agreement? Can't we just have a job description and hire somebody as an Atwell employee, or would you not recommend that?
Well, the IRS requires the assessor to be an employee.
Right, if, if they're not an LLC or a corporation.
Yeah, so if you go with an individual, then typically, they would be an employee, or they could develop their own LLC and, you know, go book that.
Okay, so we should have a job description?
Yeah, I have both, I have an LLC and I'm an employee in the four units of government.
But, but we really don't need an employment contract if we have a job description?
Yeah.
And, and, and they're not an LLC?
Right.
Okay. Well, that's great, that's, that's really good, man. So, here's the million-dollar question, or the $45,000 question. Based on everything you've seen here, what do you think would be a fair wage for a new hire? Based on what you've seen so far?
Yeah, well, Sheboygan County is the cheapest there is, I think, for paying assessors. It really is. Typically, over in Emma County, they pay about 20 bucks a card. So you're looking at, on the record card system, there's like 4,400 properties on there, but I think with the review I did of the roll, there's about 350-ish that should be deleted. There are old splits and combinations.
Yeah, Bobby told me 3,875, I think.
Yeah, but I, like I said, I don't remember exactly how many should be deleted. Somewhere in that area, there's a rough neighborhood of, of the amount of cars that should be deleted right off, because the only ones you need to keep are DDA properties that are retired, you know, 'cause you can't reuse the old numbers.
So let's just round that up to 80,000. Do we, because we're giving this person Terry an assistant?
Yeah.
Should we delete, should we subtract her amount out of that?
You know, as far as helping?
Yeah, so in other words, if, if the whole bill's 80 grand, should that also include Terry? So whatever Terry gets, which is about 20-some thousand dollars, then the rest goes to the assessor? Would that work?
Is she strictly in the assessing department?
That's all she does.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, and I've talked, where she told me that she is a, you know, a bouncer on within the office, she'll be working with the clerk, or she'll be working with someone else stuffing envelopes with the treasurer.
Well, it's in the past, as you did. Now, she is, she is the assistant treasurer, she's the deputy treasurer, but her primary...
We hired her to be...
Duty is to be the assessor assistant.
Yeah. Well, again, that would be a negotiation between you and them.
Well, I just wanna know what's, what you think is fair.
Well, see, at the city of Sheboygan, which is about the same size, they're paying 55.
Okay.
And that would be similar, that's about, probably 16 bucks a card or something, and then that's realistic for Sheboygan County.
Okay. So, we're close, but a bit on the low. Now, in, in, in the Sheboygan that you talked about, is it just one person?
Yes.
Oh. No assistant to do fieldwork?
Nope.
That role is up to date, that's all maintained and been up to date?
Yeah, that, that role there, everything in the residential class was completely redone prior to the new assessor taking over, there was complete remoder and a list of everything. The only thing that wasn't done at the requirement of the previous assessor was, they didn't want the update done on the effective age and the change of classifications on the home. That was going to be completely up to him, and I did it. Typically, what we did was we went out in the field, we brought the property record cards that were odd to the current assessor, and told him that these are the problem properties, and he did the point. So if we found something that had an effective age of 45 years or 50 years, and the home was completely remodeled, well, we brought it in and said, "Should be at or close to type thing, you know, maybe 80, 90% good instead of the 45% good." And maybe the, the quality of the home, there's about six different classes. A was architecturally designed, down to D, which is just barely minimal living type properties. And it might be underclass as far as quality, and we'd recommend a change in class, but we never actually did any. All we did was just bring it up to date with accurate measurements and digital photos and Apex sketches.
And then, could you, yeah, the whole?
So, for those situations, would a, if you added those properties to the 20% that need to be assessed each year, would, would that new assessment help correct any of those issues?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that, that's the idea of the fieldwork, is to bring everything up to date. You know, when you go out in the field, because there's a lot of people that do maintenance on their home, you know, and it's not required, but there's a lot of maintenance that's, that's not taxable. It's called Matthew Gasol Improvement Act, and it allows you to do routine maintenance. Now, that's not, I use cherrywood cabinets compared to the old pine, you know, not a pine cabinets. Cherrywood cabinets with, you know, stained glass doors and all that stuff is not equal to naughty pine cabinets, if you see a lot of cabinets. If you're changing that type of environment, that's not normal maintenance. But if you put in a typical cabinet today, or new windows or whatever, that's normal, even though it's a heck of a lot better, it's still typical. Yeah. So, what you do there is, you know, you evaluate the property as it was, at, let's say, 150,000. Then when you get all done, it's now worth 200,000, let's say. So you have $50,000 on Matthew Gas that's sitting out there that's not taxable. There's a place on the software, it's called the MCL 211.7B, I think it is, you type in that $50,000, and it ignores it in the assessment and the taxable value. And then, when it sells, the next guy gets paid.
So it goes on the assessed value?
What's that?
That goes on the assessed value, that Matthew Gas, doesn't, but it shows up?
No, it just disappears.
It shows up when you sell it?
It shows up in the, actually in the legal description.
So it's a count of four, but it's...
It's a count of four, but it's not a count of four.
Something great, something great.
It doesn't, it doesn't hurt the, the current property owner, like I said, the next one gets, as soon as you get a transfer of ownership, the system will pop up and say, "You got Matthew Gas, you wanna get rid of it now?" Yeah, we don't know, we should not say that often, but you say yes, and hope to send that assessment.
Well, and the market value also weighs in on the assessment at that point, too?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
So on the last page, could you explain that to me, 'cause I'm a dummy when it comes to this? Data fields to webpage, could you explain that to us?
Oh, yeah. BSN A software has a lot of things out there for assessing and whatever, but one of the things they have is access to your role, real-time. So if you change a name, as soon as it goes on there, it is out on their system. And it allows the general public to just review anything. You know, the sketches are out there, the images are out there.
Is that on our webpage?
No.
You have to pay for it?
You have to pay for it, everything's got a price.
I got one right, thank you.
Huh?
I said, "I got one right", thank you.
Do we know how much?
Uh, no, I don't.
I do not know. I mean, that's something you can get real quick as far as a, a bid on.
Well, the, the other option is, we, what we've been talking about is, the county has all that information at the county level, if we get permission to copy and paste their, their website.
He's talking about Sheboygan County GIS?
Yeah.
Yeah, you, you could actually...
That's not as detailed.
Well, the GIS system's out there anyway.
Yeah, it's pretty detailed, but, you know, we'd have to compare the amount of detail from one system to the other system.
Yeah, but it doesn't have the drawings of the actual home, like your job map picture.
Now, when you, when you look at the, if you get on the, any of you can get on the city of Sheboygan website, they do have that out there.
Oh, that's good to know.
I don't even know exactly where it is on your website, I have visited, it's not real hard to find, you're looking for just something with BSN A, and you can click on it. Just, you know, search by address, search by owner, it doesn't matter, pick a Smith, and buy one that's got a building on it, and then you'll see the pictures, and then you'll see where you can actually enter those pictures, you'll see all the pictures, and then you'll be able to see the Apex sketch, house value. It doesn't show you, I don't think it shows you the calculations for value, but it'll show you, you know, it's got a garage and...
Yeah.
One-story wall or something.
So, uh, yesterday, I got this magazine from...
City Climber.
On the front page, it says, "Inside the State's Assessment Role Audit", and then it has a list, and it says, "We're gonna be, all of Sheboygan County are gonna be audited in 2026", but what does that mean?
What they do is they send in a, a person that audits what the assessor has available for what they wanna see. So they'll, they'll be looking at economic condition factors, which is a calculation of how buildings are calculated. They'll be looking for land values, they'll be looking for the sales of land in some type of a format where you can understand it. They may look for, it's called override values, where you can actually click on your system, say, "I, I want this value of $10,000, not the $25,000 that's on the roll", and it'll override the actual true cash value. And they want those gone, which they should be. And they also look for properties that are, um, let's say you got, you know, a 100-foot lot on the river, and going right through the center of your lot is a big ravine, and makes it unbuildable. Well, it's valued at X amount of dollars per foot, maybe a thousand bucks a foot or whatever the number is, but because the property's unbuildable, maybe the typical reduction is 50%. So that lot would be put in 50%, and then you gotta type a reason in as to why you did that reduction, so anybody can understand it, and it'd just be simply, you know, we're being, you know, a lot unbuildable. And everybody'd understand why that lot is at 700 bucks or 500 bucks instead of a thousand.
Now, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was gonna change subject, go ahead.
Apex one, so it makes sense.
What safeguards do we need to keep in place to make sure that the new assessor... I gotta be careful how I put this. To make sure that the new assessor stays in his lane or her lane, and that our assistant isn't getting the brunt of the work? 'Cause we've had that problem in the past. Do you have any suggestions for us at all, other than the job descriptions?
Well...
I think that's the number one, I think, is the job description.
In everything I've ever done, I am the first person on site. If it's new construction, I'm the first one there.
Oh, okay.
I do all the new construction, then from there, I have a gentleman that works for me, and he's certified, he's the second one. He'll come in behind me, maybe five years later, and look at that property. And then, if there's anything different there, we have, you know, the field card with us, he'll be looking for anything new, such as porch, asphalt, concrete, somebody snuck in a garage, who knows? But that's what I have him do, and I'm always the first one out there. I, I think it's my responsibility.
So you and I talked a few days back, and we were talking about our assistant. You're extremely happy with her, right?
Terry is very thorough. Oh, very thorough, she's so thorough, I, I tell her, "You gotta bring him back to earth, lady". I, I tell her, I, I say, "You gotta use the kiss, you know, keep it simple stupid", because she's going out there, and she's writing a hundred million notes on these cards, and she's got four or five pieces of paper, and she got them all over the place, and she gets back to the office, and, "Yeah, you want some notes, but you don't need all she does", and she drives herself nuts. And she'll be hunting for stuff, and I say, "Calm it down, Terry".
Sounds like an engineer, I know.
Yeah, but one of the things they, they have, like with the BSN A software, when you print out a property record card, you get three to five pages. It's redundant, so I created my own. And mine's the kiss thing, you know, all it is, is a property record card, property owner's name, it's got the PRA on it, it's got the percent of good, the quality of home, all the pictures within the software, and a drawing. Then if you go out on site, you fill in the blanks, come back in and update the system.
How did you?
I, we're in the process of doing the Township of Excellence program, where we're looking at every department in trying to improve efficiency and effectiveness. Do you see anything that we can improve in, in, as, as we're making changes anyway, that will help with customer service, or make it more efficient, or, you know, cost-effective? Do you see anything that we can do to improve that?
No, from the assessing side, I, I just use what I do, because I usually mail and phone calls. And it's so fast, if all of a sudden she wanted a copy of her record card, she can call me if I'm on the phone, I can email it to her. She can look at it in real-time with me.
Yeah, you did that to me.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's how easy it is with the BSN A software, they'll make that work for you and, and give people whatever they want. I've had people do appeals with the Michigan Tax Tribunal, and they call me, you know, and they're ready to FOI me, and I say, "You don't need to FOI me, what do you want? I don't care, I give them everything they want, you know, I've, I've given them half the lake if they want it, I don't care, you know, it's just, there you go". And it just makes it so simple, because they get all they want, and then when they get done, they go, "Well, I don't have a break, you know, and up we go". Make it simple.
Uh, we, we heard something yesterday about, or the day before, Jay, about a policy?
Which one?
An assessor contact policy required by the state of Michigan.
One of the things that the Department of Treasury wants you to do when you go on-site is leave a business card. That's the only thing that I'm aware of, let them know you were there. Typically, when an assessor's in the area, everybody knows. You knock on door, you walk on door, I've seen people leave.
Alan said it, Alan, if I, if I heard him correctly, said that this was a relatively new requirement over the, in the past three years or so.
Yeah.
That we have to have a assessor, a written assessor contact policy, isn't that what he said?
I don't recall. Well, we notify, every year we notify the property owners to, with our assessment change notice, we put right in there that this may be the year that we're gonna come and visit you.
That's a good idea, put it on the, right on the website.
Yeah, do it on the website. I mean, you can, if, if whoever takes orders says, "I wanna do the lake to start with", you can send them letters out and let them know, I mean, it starts getting costly, but if that's what you want, that's what they do. It's, it's not that hard, it's, it's timeless. And they find out in a hurry you're there, believe me, they, you knock on door one, 54, I'm already know.
So, you put a list of those that are gonna get a visit on the website?
Yeah, they can do anything, I mean, the software's designed, if you set it up right, which I assume a lot of it is, where you can block certain areas and just say, you know, "Oh, these may go to the website for this year, because that's all lakefront".
Well, PIING does that, when they send, PIING, when, when they're gonna come through and check trees and lines and stuff, they send us a notice that, okay, this is the year that your area is gonna be checked on for, for tree limbs and overgrowth and things like that. They send us that notice, yeah, so it's the same kind of thing you're talking about.
Yeah, and they probably do it through the postcard, that situation.
I don't know if this has ever happened to you, Clayton, but a couple of years ago, the Bert Lake Buddies is a group of, of Facebook, and they were posting a picture of a guy that was wandering around all these houses. And if anybody knew who this is, he'd been showing up at all these houses around, you'd be freaking. It was Fred Lindroth, the assessor for Bert Township, now, 80 years old, they think they got a guy that's prowling around in new...
I, I carry a clipboard, and on the back of my clipboard it says Assessor's Office, and I kinda hold it up, you know, so...
So you don't get shot?
They all have, everybody has a security camera.
Yeah, they're all over the place, you never know where they're gonna be, so you just, you just kinda wait around. And if I see a camera, I just stick it up there, because I...
That's a real good, that's a real good safety issue.
Yeah, that's for sure, you never know what's gonna happen.
A blue jacket with assessor on it, just like FBI.
I had a lady in town, I was at her, at her door, and all of a sudden, they handed her a ring, and that's when I first came up, and all of a sudden, I got somebody, "Who are you? Who are you?".
Yeah, they want, a lot of unique things happen.
But people want that, people want that, they wanna know, 'cause it's this day and age, people wanna know who you are, Terry, what's your safety vest up?
I carry, I carry a business card, I knock on the door, my stepdaughter works with me, I love that, especially with, you know, with women being hormonal, because they're, sometimes they're a little bit nervous about somebody being there, especially, you know, one man. With her, everything's just, I mean, it's totally calm, I, I had situations where I worked on myself all the time, you could tell the defense that was coming up, just nervousness, and with her standing there, it's a completely different.
Well, there's a lot of people that don't even get anybody coming to their door for months at a time, 'cause it's a rural area, you know, and you live way out in the rural area, and you just don't get people driving in your driveway, it's like, okay, there's something going on.
I drove five miles into the Boondocks one time, and then drove a half a mile north on the two-track and followed the house.
They did not want to pound.
You know, this thing looks abandoned, you know, everything's closed up, I bang on the door, I know there's nobody home, there's a guy walking, walking, "What the heck?". You know, there's not even any electricity back there, I get shocked up.
Off the grid.
Yeah, it's off the grid.
So our last question is, how do you interface with the BOR?
What's that?
How do you interface with the border review?
What? Well, annually, I'm always contacting the border review when weird things are happening, if anything is weird, which is typically not. But, like, I got a email that's going out to buy boards of review for the December border review, I get a pre-border review agenda, I send it to them, what, what they're gonna be looking at. With the way that the Michigan Department of Treasury is taking authority away from the border review, we're gonna go strictly veterans exemptions by the looks of it, 'cause PRA's are now done by the assessor. I also do my own border review class. I teach the BSN A software so they can operate it, because when you're a one-man operation, I do five units of government, they can, uh, print the border review response off the BSN A software. I created 20 to 25 responses as the backside for the border review, and it may say something as simple as, "Assessment determined accurate and equitable", or, "Property was considered inaccurate due to recalculation of, you know, of the, the home", or something of that nature. And they love it, because there's no, trying to figure out why we're gonna not adjust or adjust this property. And with that, it allows me to put that in the software with the same verbiage, and then I create reports from that, I do all their minutes, I, I do all. The only thing they have to do is make the decision. They're gonna quit when I do it. That's what they tell me.
I don't have any other questions.
I should not have any, like, do you have any questions?
I've asked you several questions over the last eight, 10 years.
Anyways, one of the things I was gonna tell you about, you know, border review, they're supposed to get a lot of stuff for them, you know, this is, this is probably a few township. And here is all the stuff that I do, you know, ECF, sales, all that stuff is in there. We can also put together any kind of report, like, if you got the stuff available, I create a report that will give you all the sales on the water. Now, I'll give that to the general public, because the general public does not like the idea that they... Now, I don't give that to the general public because the general public does not like the idea that they, you just bought a property for a million dollars and it's out there for everybody.
I wish.
See, yeah, I just, I just, you know, some numbers out there. Even if it's twenty thousand, they don't want you to know, they don't care that it's out there in the assessment role, they don't care if it's out there on a computer at the county building, they just don't want it out there where everybody can see it, on, on that type of environment. So I create a PDF of all that stuff and I put it on their computer. And while they're sitting around, if there's nobody coming through the door, they, they can look at them and understand why, you know, the sales are happening as they are. The, the last form I think I gave you on there was a Form eighteen. The eighteen is the projection from the county that you guys should be, you know, kind of aware of.
Yep.
Yeah, Mike's familiar with it. That's the projection based on sales or appraisal studies that is done in the, you know, the government, put out by the county, now that is, um, looked at by the Department of Treasury for the, the sales that happened with the sales study for residential properties. And the appraisal study, they go over all their stuff that they do as far as E C Fs, land values, things of that nature also, so they're watched. And then they give you a projection based on last year's value divided by the current ratio and it gives you a new true cash value. And then that's how you get the numbers of how much money you gotta raise. On this particular case, in the residential class, this number here, forty-one twenty-four indicates that properties are gonna go up twenty-five percent basically this year. But it might be here, depending on how the E C F gave them their setup, could go up fifteen percent, the lake could go up forty percent, fires could go up ten percent, who knows? You know, it just depends on how the properties are selling because they, they call it a coefficient of dispersion and it's a measurement that varies how you assess lakefront relationship to offshore, relationship to riverfront, that type of thing. So if you're doing the job right, your coefficient, coefficient of dispersion is supposed to be then about fifteen percent. Some years it's a little more, some years a little less, it just depends on what's happening in the current market because as you guys know, one week the property's been a hundred thousand, actually it's a hundred fifty thousand, it's two hundred thousand, they're jumping, but I understand, it's starting to settle down now. Uh?
Please don't remind me.
Well, most people are lucky because they're locked into the tactical values, so they don't get the rig of inflation. And this year's five percent is high, it's ever been.
Five, that's, oh, I thought it'd be eight or something.
That is the max too.
Max is five.
Max is five.
Oh, my, okay.
Yeah.
So it's the true cash value that's used to do the equalization, what you're saying?
Yeah, you put the true cash, you plug it into the software and then you start running numbers and pulling hair, seeing that.
Now, what is that five percent effective with, winter taxes or some?
All. All taxes.
So, my winter taxes went up five percent?
No.
Next year, next year.
Next year.
Hundred percent.
You'll love that, love that. Also in there, I, I see what a couple of things, um, the spreadsheet, this thing here, this is a part of the land division problems that we run into. I just wanted you guys to see that this is a simple one because it's just basic land, but it's two different types of properties, there's lakefront, riverfront property plus acreage. And in the assessing process, you have to prorate tax and value according to how it's assessed. So if you've got, you know, in this particular case, we get a hundred and, or two hundred forty-four thousand dollars worth of, uh, true cash value and part of it's acreage, part of it's riverfrontage, we gotta prorate that according to how it's assessed. So the numbers come up, X amount of dollars per foot, X amount of dollars per acre. And then when the property is split, we have to prorate that tax on the roll and then balance all that up on each split. Now, if you do it for a property that's got asphalt, barns, houses, whatever, you might have three different houses in three different spots and asphalt that's gotta go in two different areas and all that stuff has gotta be broke up, so there's a lot of time sometimes involved in doing a land division, so don't be surprised about that. And the second sheet of that is just the survey, how I do things. I had to highlight them obviously because they didn't copy very good, but I put the parcel ID numbers on in there and those are all emailed to the property owner or mailed, whichever may be, and it's also scanned within the software. One of the things that Bobby mentions, you were talking about, uh, some type of report for combining property? Some type of, I don't know, this is something I have in my system here. But we got a guy that wants to combine his property, we require all names to be exactly the same. Because sometimes you have properties where the property owner does not have his wife on, the vice versa.
Yeah, we had to send people to go get quick claim deeds and stuff.
Yeah.
Because it has to match.
It's all gotta be the same, yeah, so we tell them on there and then they, they have to put in the parcels they wanna, want us to combine. But most of the time, again, I do it maybe a little different than most people because I'll be dealing with, you know, her and I'll look at it and say, well, you don't have your husband on there, well, he's on there. And also, and then you look up the deed because we got access, I got access to the county. We find the deed, find out it was wrong or she's wrong. And then we, you know, the deeds gotta be done so we can do it. And, you know, getting this over the phone is quick, getting deeds for the whole nine yards is just, the in-office thing, we don't have that option that works that fast, that simple, because first of all, she's gotta drive to the office to get there. That's basically all I got.
Listen, I really appreciate you coming, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Thanks, Clay.
Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
Assessing.
Let's take up assessing a little bit.
You're a bud.
Huh?
What do you mean?
I got questions.
Yeah, I know, you're referring.
For me, Clay. Can you give us an idea where we are?
A little more than you can.
We've got a little bit of options.
Can you give us an idea where we are?
We've, uh, we've interviewed two people and one person's withdrawn, we have a good candidate and then we have one more candidate that we put on hold until after, we've got to just talk to him, Clayton, Albert. So we'll try and get something set up with him next week and then maybe, if I can get him Monday, we can have something, a recommendation by Tuesday maybe. I guess we're not in that big of a hurry because we, you know, we're in the middle of this tax season. So I think it'll be a difficult transition right now, January, January will be.
I have a question if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
Um, obviously you guys are looking for somebody.
Yes.
What's the plan?
That's what we're discussing.
He's the chief assessor, that's why we're asking, what's the plan?
You know, you know I was gonna lasso you, lasso you in and not let you go for as long as possible, you know, I, I'm not trying to blow smoke, but Clayton was, uh, is probably the most well-respected and knowledgeable assessor in, in the area.
That's true.
And, um, but I think what it is, is we transition out of this tax season into the next. And we talked about maybe sticking through the, all the way up to the tax bills or, uh, or the assessment notices that were sent out or whatever it felt comfortable. You and I are gonna have to talk because I, I have a good idea of who, who I would recommend. And I think that would probably be a sit-down with a candidate, myself and you and maybe Bobby and just say, how are we gonna transition this? What's the best time and date? So.
Okay, um, you know, I, I told you before, I would, I would stay on until you guys moved to the next one. The problem I got and I explained right up front was length, I, I, I don't have the highest level of field or things of that nature, it's just impossible.
Yeah.
But to get you through the next, you know, assessing cycle, I can do that, it's gonna be hard because there's a lot of things that I looked at that didn't pan out as I expect them to be. That's stuff I worry about because the minute you sign your name, you're saying you did it right. And it's not right in my mind, whether it's right with the Department of Treasury and they'd be happy with it, I don't know.
Well, would, would, uh, third of January be? If we hired somebody on the third of January, is that too late?
Oh, it's, it's never too late, it's just hard.
Okay, so what you're saying is the sooner the better?
If you're gonna hire somebody, yes. If you're not going to hire somebody, if you want me to go through this cycle and, and work whomever in or just wait till after March border review or actually if you use through a state equalization, which should be June, you know, you can go that way. But, uh, I'm, I just, I wanna warn you upfront, I'm, I'm limited capacity.
Yeah.
You would not get out of me what you'd get out of a typical assessor as far as getting open in the field and doing the job as it is intended to be done.
What would be the ideal time to bring in a new assessor in your mind?
So as the weather cracks or today.
Okay.
You got December border review coming up a week from Tuesday and there's nobody, you know, I'm, I'm ready for it, I mean, if you want me to do it, as much as you. But again, my units of government are all set with a specific time, we have to adjust around, I don't know, do you have a resolution passed that allows you to change the date of some border review?
I don't know if we did that, I think we did March, there might be a resolution there.
Oh, there's one other resolution you guys should look at is your poverty resolution. Is, I, I read it and in there you guys are putting the amount of money for poverty, how you qualifying, you know, one person's thirteen dollars, whatever. I recommend you take that out. If you take that out, then you don't have to do that resolution annually. All you have to do is worry about changing, if you're gonna change your asset level test or something about that resolution, then that's when you'll have to revisit it, if you, because those numbers change every year, then you have to redo the resolution.
As long as you're going to the federal recommended.
Yeah, I would put into something that you can follow the guidelines of the, uh, the federal income status.
That makes it easier.
Yeah, it's just, why waste your time, you know, the resolution that's unnecessary. Unless you, like I said, you're just planning on changing the asset level test.
Yeah.
Okay. Could, could you, if, if he writes a job description, could you review it for him? I mean, we, we sent you one, remember, Mike?
I think there's a.
There's one on the MTA website.
I was just gonna say, I think that.
We went through that at one of these meetings and it wasn't, according to Bobby, it wasn't close.
We'll figure it out.
You still have that, right, Mike?
Yes, if you, you email them to me.
Yeah.
So you guys are gonna make a decision how long I'm gonna be here, is that what you're gonna do?
I'd like to talk to you a little bit more because.
Well, he's, he's on the hiring committee, the three of us are not.
Okay.
But we wanna get you off the hook, because I know you're busy.
I mean, I, you know, I'll pretty much do whatever you and Mike recommend.
Yeah. Yep.
We're talking to you soon.
We, we just appreciate all the help you've given us in this transition.
Yeah.
I'll be down Monday if you wanna, if you're feeling good.
Oh, yeah. Okay, thanks, Clay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Thank you.
Appreciate your interview and expression.
Well, we ought to interview, well, you, you have a chance.
One more day, when are you gonna do that?
I'll see, I'll make a call, I can make a call a day later.
Got something on?
Yeah, I won't, I won't be here after Tuesday, but you should meet me at seven.
Can I give a line, John, or no?
Okay, Township of Excellence.
Yeah, can I start? I wanna ask the board, um, I wanna talk about chapter two and what happened yesterday. Because, uh, as I told, uh, I was here most of the day, so was Mike and so was, um, Jay.
Laura.
And Laura. So, uh, it was a learning experience and as I said, we're not gonna get this perfect the first time. So, uh, you know, chapter two, uh, paragraph seventeen says, no changes after Friday, five P M. But we're not there yet, so I, I wanna make a motion that the board allow the supervisor and myself to add one additional, uh, agenda item uh, that we really need to have on there, which is, uh, something to do with parks. So that's my motion. Is there a motion there or is there a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, I'll answer it.
All right.
Thank you, Bob, thank you. Uh, just, just, uh, some comments. Um, we did get the new software and Laura caught on really, really quick and she's got it down now.
Well, that COFAX?
Yeah, the COFAX saved us a ton of money not having to deal with Adobe. But it's just a question now of refining the system, in my opinion, and I think you saw that. What the county does is they have a SharePoint site or, or some share site of some kind uh, where, uh, the department heads load up their document. And then the person that's putting the agenda items together just goes and grabs them. What, what Laura had to do is we took everything that you had, I had, and Mike had, and we put it on the desktop. I mean, that's one way to do it, but that's pretty much the hard way. So I think what I learned yesterday, and I don't know what kind of IT stuff you had, but if there was a some kind of a common folder on that server that Laura and you, well, see, that's a problem because let's say, planning, they don't have access. They'd still have to email, Doug doesn't have access, so you can see the problem.
Yeah.
Generally, they, they get, is there any information, generally, they, they come to me, you know, I'm on the planning commission, I go to parks.
Yeah, that maybe you could throw in, like the airport report.
Right, which was really good.
So, uh, in any event, I just wanted to tell you that, um, there were a few wrinkles, but, uh, we got it done. And I think the real key is just continue to ask the department heads and those filing reports, please, don't wait till the last minute. I mean, your deadline's Wednesday, the sooner the better, and Laura could literally start on Thursday. Start building it now that we know, we have a format. So all the things that you saw on there where it said, um, one said, uh, Bill slash, that's a placeholder that she's keeping.
Right, right. For consent.
Yeah, yeah, the headers, so.
Yeah, the agenda typically becomes the structure for how we're gonna put documents in place within the present agenda packet. So the sooner we get the agenda, and it can change, but as soon as we have a structure to it and what's, what's not likely to change or may be tentative, we can start giving packets associated, or not packets, but documents associated with those agenda items. And that takes, and then that means, you know, some people are sending in, uh, not those notes, uh, emails. Email's gotta be converted to some sort of document, documents gotta be placed someplace close to that agenda item, you know, on the computer so that when it comes time to, you would just assemble it, you're just taking all the different pieces and assembling it into a whole.
So like the next time on Wednesday, once they're in, she could start Thursday morning taking those documents, converting them to PDF or putting them on Word and converting them to PDF or taking them, gotta paste them out of an email. But the very fact that we did everything in about, how long are you hearing, about seven hours? Was really, really good. It oughta go smoother next time if she's able to start. We're able to start on Thursday.
Right.
So instead of an email, have an attachment to the emails, what you really want then, so you can, you know, download it and.
Yeah, but we, but we have some people up there, like Andy Bowman and Jennifer Andrew, they do not have Word from what I've seen, and they've gotta send it by email. So I think what we wanna do, my recommendation is, whatever you send to Mike for an agenda, info Laura.
Yep.
And the clerk. That way, she can just, you can just go to Laura and say, uh, did you get that, could you get started on our? Yeah, or she'll, she'll know what to do.
So I think now that we've done it, we can write down what we did and put it into some sort of standardized work that will help other people know what's involved and why we're asking for the information. Yeah, procedure, why we're asking for the information we're asking for. It isn't because, uh, we're trying to create paperwork, it's because we want to make this an efficient process.
Yeah, it's just a workflow.
It's a workflow, yeah.
Then one thing I found out about the software, and I haven't told you this yet, uh, before, just recently, when we did an agenda, um, I was attaching it to the calendar. Well, if I put the board packet, um, if I put, uh, the board packet under government board packets, open it, copy the link, all I have to do is put the link on the calendar. So I'm not uploading that file twice because at some point, Civic Plus, when we run out of space, it's gonna charge us extra, so. Uh, so now, if you were to go to the township calendar and you see that, um, that event, it's got a little word up there with an icon that says agenda. And if you click on that, it goes right to the board packet, of which the first page is agenda. But I appreciate you coming in, it, it turned out better than I thought.
Yeah.
I don't know how you.
No, it's fine with me, I was, I was anxious to get back and get working again, it was.
Yeah, and I wanna, I wanna thank Bob for his help and Laura did a great job too. She was very, very, uh, involved and wanted to make sure it got done right.
Yeah, and she came in on her day off. So, um, So, um, I did talk to Laura about the web and I'm gonna, after the holidays, I'll start trying to do it. In the meantime, if you have any meetings you want posted, uh, even though I'm gonna be out of town, send me a, text me, you know, whatever you want.
Okay.
Okay, so, and then we're, what, chapter seven, correct?
Yeah.
Uh, we waited, Mike, on chapter seven because we only had three people here.
Okay.
And we wanted to get as much input as possible.
I don't have time for several.
Okay, how about you? There it is. So, chapter seven, uh, what you can see here, take a look, right here. Seven point five, why did that start at seven point five? I left that in there because seven point one, two, three, and four were mundane, didn't apply to us. And then, everything after seven point five was mundane and didn't apply to us, except for a social media policy. So the social media policy is word for word from Spring Lakes. Now, 'cause Bobby asked for it, uh, at our last meeting, and I gave it to her. So you can see here that this thing, and I called them without it, this thing's been reviewed by their lawyers four times, version four. So I'm pretty confident we're gonna be good, but there, uh, so the only thing in chapter seven is this paragraph and this. And we set that out for the last meeting, but we wanted to wait. And what that does is it, it basically gives the rules, so you and I do a lot of the posting to Facebook, to, it's, and to the web. It's telling us the rules of the, of the road. And it tells you under what circumstances, let's say you're taking care of Facebook. Somebody makes a really gross comment, it's inappropriate, that gives you the authority to.
Remove it.
To remove it, or to make a determination. So in other words, uh, somebody goes, well, you're, you're hurting my free speech, uh, you shouldn't re, uh, you shouldn't removed all my cuss words. Well, I'm sorry, but we have a policy and the policy's pretty clear. Probably why it took the lawyers four tries.
Would, would our, our lawyer looked at this?
No, the Spring Lakes, Spring Lakes, which is one, you know, the Township of Excellence Award three times.
And they're general law township?
Yeah, no, they're, they're.
Are they chartered? I thought they were general law.
Maybe, maybe. But in any event, uh, their Grand Rapids attorney reviewed that, so I, I just don't see us wasting, you know, money on another legal review. I, I don't think it's necessary.
Well, that's the whole idea of taking templates and help from other townships and stuff, because they've already gone through that expense, we don't have to.
Unlike chapter five, Mike, where, you know, a lot of that employee handbook was from, what, two thousand nine? So it needed to be reviewed. I don't know if you saw it, but.
Plus we had to add the parkland.
He took a lot out.
Did I get this one?
It was in the previous meeting's board packet. The one that you couldn't make. Tuesday, it was in Tuesday's board packet.
Okay.
That was posted and, uh, we just didn't wanna, uh, proceed because, uh, we, uh, you and Janet weren't here.
Have you guys all, you, you have all together reviewed this, but you just held off the.
Correct.
We, we didn't review it at the meeting, it was in the packet. We, we just decided to wait.
Well, Bob and I, you, you worked on this stuff for months.
Right, right.
You know, we worked on this for months.
You know, if you compare this to that, starting here, it's word for word. So the only difference, oh, in this paragraph, of course.
I just, I'm still to a point where I, I, hell, I wish I had a little more time with it or to call Rob, I, I get it, or submit it to Rob, with my feeling.
Why would we submit something that's already been reviewed?
Well, that's their, their attorney.
I'm sorry?
Their, their attorney reviewed it. Our, our attorney did not review that.
No, of course not.
No.
I don't think it's nec, I personally don't think it's necessary to go through that expense.
Okay, would you give me just five minutes to read this?
Yeah, sure, sure.
We can bring up small recess, people go to the bathroom.
Would you, that'd be fine.
I'm, I'm in for a five minute recess.
Five seconds.
They make it five minutes, fifty seconds, 'cause I have to go to the bathroom too. Okay, we need a motion to open, I need backup.
I'll make that.
Okay, support?
Support.
Now, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, uh, I've had a chance to look at, I still have questions. I mean, I, I've got a quick question, right? Does Township Board reserves the right to block, uh.
Where are you?
Uh.
There it is. Determinate.
No, you have to, no, to block any personnel without notice at any time from using the Facebook or. So that would be a Township Board motion to say, supervisor cannot use the, or clerk cannot use the, or.
Where are we?
Well, let me look off under here. Right there, Township reserves the right to monitor for, determine personnel's access to any social media sites. That is at the, what number is that, bottom of ninety-three?
So in other words, what that means, you're on Facebook, can you put up the.
Yeah, top news and Mike.
You're putting your thing about the Fourth of July or something.
Right.
Somebody starts yelling and screaming, you know, inappropriate language, all kinds of talk, right? You delete it, uh, based on this policy. Well, then, you do something else a month later, right, same thing happens again. You know, at some point, you have to have the authority to block that person.
What it says though is.
Personnel.
Personnel's access to a, our, our personnel, I mean.
Jay.
Yeah, I'll behave. Well, that's what I'm saying. I mean, what, how was that decision made?
That's made by you.
What, what if I'm the guy you got to know about using, you see what I'm, what I'm saying?
Would you, would you like to say Township Board makes that decision?
Yeah, some, some, some boards are, I mean, it's just, it said.
I don't agree with that because you need the authority.
I know, I know, but what the, what the last, okay.
You, you went on.
Yeah.
If, if we're, if we're the, quote, the webmasters even for Facebook.
I just see, I just see a conflict there. Not, not, I see it on the board.
So how would you like it, the word?
I, I'm not sure.
Township reserves the right to monitor. Or discontinue personnel's access. That's a pretty cart block thing there, it's a, you know, the lawyers must have created it for a reason.
There's a, there's a risk either way, right?
I think.
You don't have that statement in there.
But I just think you have, don't you have a process for it? I mean, it's like, you, you call a meeting and say, Mike, we don't want you on the Facebook anymore, you're getting carried away or something.
So what would that process be?
I don't know.
Would it be a special meeting, uh, of the Township Board?
An intervention at Township.
Well, you have to tell you what about personnel office, they might be constantly, I mean.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I'm, I'm.
No, the, the.
Okay, let, let me give you another example. We have an employee, Pickle.
Yep.
Not on the board.
Yep.
Right, uh, and we decide that that person's gonna have the additional duty of a webmaster. And then they start doing the social media posts and there's problems. You've gotta have the authority.
I, I understand that. I, I have no problem with that. I says, any personnel, that you, you and I, we have that.
Well, actually, it would be you.
Yeah, well, well, you, you do the posting on the, uh.
Right, but I wouldn't do anything without calling the supervisor, I understand.
Yeah.
So, so your requirement is to treat the.
Offenders.
No, the elected officials different than.
Personnel.
Well, no, I, I, if, if it's, if it's, who is a webmaster? You know, who's gonna be the webmaster? It's gonna be Laura.
Well, you, you have the rights to all the social media, as do I. And the goal over time would be to have Laura also.
So then there's.
It would be my recommendation.
Yeah, okay.
Because, uh, 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 she's had access to the web before, she's someone familiar. I'm gonna trade her with it and then, when we're done with the web, I'll trade her on Facebook again, because you can just send her the, when you have a graphic or something, hey, Laura closes.
I see what you're saying, I mean, I, I want, is that specifically stated that, that Township, you know, need? I don't like that idea. It's not just me, the person that's in the seat. Uh, he has that person of, of, has he become, has he become, uh, you know, drunk with power and starts posting things? You have to, you have to say to him.
Maybe we could add in there that, um, that there could be like a commission with the three people type thing.
Let's do this. Uh, I'm not making a motion yet. Let's send this to the lawyers as soon as we can. And then you tell him to take a look at that paragraph.
Well, I, I'm.
Cause I, I read this.
I wanna, I wanna bounce off of Jan's comment, avoid a public comment, because you did make a comment that I agree with. Uh, and I'll bring that up.
I do like the fact that a lot of the stuff that is covered though, like if we had to take a comment off of social media.
Oh, yeah.
We, we have to have the ability, but we also have to say that according to this, we have to remove it, but it has, still has to be documented and recorded, so that way someone can't come back and say, you're obstructing my free speech. Well, then we can say, well, you violated our policy about, uh, cuss words or personal attacks or things like that. And, and so therefore that's why it was removed. And then it covers us legally because we didn't just delete it into the thin air, we have it documented and a reason why.
We've been real lucky that people haven't done a rant in the two years that I've been working on that, we've been real lucky.
Yeah.
Because the minute you remove somebody or hide somebody, and oh, by the way, I know you know how to do this. You really never wanna delete, you only wanna hide, so yeah, right there.
Right, well, that's what they're saying here. We have to document and then we also have to, we have to record why we removed that, that comment, that rant, whatever, uh, the picture that was posted, whatever it was, um, because we have to be able to document why in case there's litigation. We don't wanna stop anybody from free speech, but we don't wanna use it for whatever people wanna use it for either, that's not the purpose.
So I'd like to make a motion that we approve chapter seven as written pending legal review.
Oh, I like that motion. I second that.
Good, give the motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's good.
Okay, now, chapter eight. Chapter eight, we really need help with this, because this is almost verbatim, not quite, but almost verbatim, uh, from the MTA. But, in my opinion, and I know some of them may not agree, uh, s- some of this we can delete. So that's why I wanna go through it, not line by line, but maybe paragraph by paragraph.
Section by section, I think.
You know, section by section, because it is a little, uh, there's a lot here that I don't think we're gonna need. Just like we took out a bunch of stuff in the other chapters that didn't apply to us, that were like the charter townships and stuff.
And some of it can be repetitive too.
So maybe we could start with, uh, eight point one, um, and eight point two, it's all together, and three. Eight, one, and two, and three are all together. God forbid if something happened to this building like it did to Badger Dairies. And we have no record of our ferry machines, um, our equipment.
How old it was.
How old it was, so we can get our money from the insurance carrier. And that's what eight one through eight three is all about.
I like the fact that we're identifying, I mean, most businesses do identify their property and.
The state does it, the federal government does it.
And, and the thing of it, we could put barcodes on stuff. We could, we could get the barcode thing and it's, and it's really quick and easy. Rather than, years ago, they put like a little metal tag with a number on it and all that kinda stuff. We don't have to do that anymore. We put a sticker with a barcode and just scan it and, and it would be simple. But I think business-wise, it makes sense, because there's a depreciation value to a lot of our equipment and stuff too, that we have to report on our taxes, our insurances and stuff. And so this will give us a baseline of when that was purchased, how old it is, and things like that. And, and I think we need to keep track of township assets. So I, I, I like the chapter in itself. I think it's moving in the right direction.
I, I'm just concerned about what's the worst scenario that could happen.
Well, you just saw it.
And, and, and this isn't, this isn't gonna happen tomorrow.
Oh, no, this is gonna take once.
This is a year project.
Yeah, it's gonna take once and all.
It's a one-year project. Very similar to when we were talking about records, right?
Yes.
You know, we lose those, we're, we're done.
I know it. Jane and I have talked, uh, over the years, the value of trying to get everything digitized, everything.
Well, the police department has the same problem.
Yeah.
And I think at some point, we're gonna have to seriously get a quote of doing that, and I don't think it's gonna be cheap. I mean, I think we're looking at, you know, five digits. Cause, uh, I did this overseas once with the records, oh my god. Cause you don't have the time, I don't have the time, nobody here has the time to store Google's records. You gotta have a company do it, uh, and then they gotta scan it, and then, uh, they've gotta be stored somewhere. Cause I don't think you're allowed to destroy the paper.
That was my question, yeah, about that.
I'm pretty sure you're not supposed to do this. We'd have to check the Michigan Record Retention.
Bob, you were talking about some of these sections that you would recommend necessarily to, um, delete or to, uh, reduce. What sections do you?
Well, yeah, let's go through it and I'll tell you when I.
Yeah, let's go through this.
So Mike, you got any questions on one, two, and three?
Nope.
Okay, how about four?
Nope.
Nope.
Anybody got any questions on five?
Nope.
Uh, hang, hang on, I pick that up. I don't think we do business this way. The clerk shall prepare a list, chapter eight, five. The clerk shall prepare a list of all such equipment recommended for disposal and shall, shall submit the recommended disposal fix access list to the Township Board for approval. I highlighted that because I'm not sure that we need to have the Township Board involved in that. What do you do now? Isn't that your decision or the chief's decision? As long as you follow the policy on the books of how we dispose of it?
Just trying to think if we've ever sold something.
Yeah.
Well, what do you do when you give rid of the?
What, what?
Vehicles.
Well, the vehicle, but I'm just thinking, I'm talking about old computers or.
Uh, no, so I had mentioned to Jay when I read through this, uh, yesterday, that the auditor keeps the list. Every year we get a list of assets from the auditor and we have to go through and delete, markup what needs to be deleted and add anything that they've missed. They pull that data from the dumps that we do, um, for the audit. So if there's new capital equipment, they're pulling it from that dump and they update the list. So the auditor always keeps the. And they update the list. So the auditor always keeps the asset list. You can keep lists at the police department, like Gordon has his own list. It will never match up with what the auditor has.
Okay, so I guess my question, the hard word I'm having is the word township board. Shall submit the recommended disposal fixed access list to the township board for approval. Why do we need the township board's approval for disposal? Is that because a fixed ax- asset may be a building or something?
Uh, yeah, fixed asset could be a.
So do we need to leave this?
I would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's my question. That's why I gotta highlight here.
I would leave it because you never know what the fixed asset is that they're recommending for disposal, so.
Okay, I got it. So the next paragraph, disposal of equipment policy. I cut and pasted the current August 14th, 2012.
That's what we're going by now.
That's what we're going by now. I put it right in there. Then we have township facilities, eight, six. And this is where we're getting into stuff that we may or may not need. Like, I think eight, eight smoking baby needs a stay of note. That covers the board.
Well, yeah.
If we tell somebody, hey, you can't be smoking in here.
Yeah. I think, I think the state laws about that too, but that's all right. It's still just specified, so it's okay.
So if you're okay with eight, eight, I'm okay with eight, six, and seven. Eight, nine's easy, that, that can stay. And then you have a use of township property by township personnel. Personal use of township property.
We have a policy, should we talk about a policy? I get people look up, trying to get a hold of me. And all of a sudden, they'll go onto the township website, they'll find supervisor@twp.com. Then I start getting personal emails and I, is there a policy about telling people do not? Cause some of this stuff is, you don't even want to open it up. You know, I mean, is there, is there a policy about rejecting or informing your people that are sending email, do not use this for personal?
I can put a disclaimer on the website if you have.
I mean, here's what I'm saying, is that, is that I've got, I mean, either the township people too, they gotta send me all these jokes. I'm telling you, thanks a lot, but, you know.
Not on your business one.
Delete, I delete, 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 even though, you know, it's, but I just wonder.
But that's just cause you're a popular guy.
Well, I'm just saying it could happen to anybody, didn't happen to me.
They want you to use their joke in your, your act, that's what it is.
I mean, if you want me to.
I think you're correct. I think you.
I think you have to let people know that do not use this.
Write the disclaimer, send it to me, I'll put it on there.
Yeah, okay.
So this basically covers us?
Personal mail.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, hey, you're on our computer gambling online like a live dealer. Hey.
Yeah.
Well, what's to stop me from doing it? I'm on my break.
Yeah.
Nope, can't do it. So this is all vanilla, eight, ten through eight, fifteen. Very vanilla.
So that policy you were finding about email kind of covers here on their email use.
Eight seventeen.
Eight twenty-four.
Does it say email use?
Or township-related purposes. So maybe we can just look at this thing, we're using that.
Well, I, we skip everything else here?
No, no, let's stick with it.
I, I was looking for something that pertained to what you were talking about.
Well, when we get there, bring it back up.
Okay.
Uh, eight sixteen, computer use, yeah. You can't be going on dating sites or whatever. Uh, eight seventeen's real vanilla. Big eighteen's real vanilla.
Well, interesting though. I think you covered your issue, Mike, with those eight seventies.
Right.
Yeah.
And that was acceptable as the question.
Okay, I'll catch up. Go ahead. Eight nineteen. What they're talking about there, it may be acceptable to go to online forums at FMDA. It's their discussion board.
Yeah.
As an example.
And there's other forums that were on for like USDA and they put that too, you know.
And this is real important, eight twenty. Limited occasional incidental use for sending blah, blah, blah for non-businesses, understated or acceptable. We really gotta have that in here because of the nature of this community. Being so small, you know what I'm saying?
Correct, yeah.
And then eight twenty-one is a must. Because it protects the township legally and it protects the employee. You know, by the way, this, this chapter, because of the limitations, does need to be reviewed. In my opinion, in my opinion, in my opinion.
You know, I guess one of the, one of the concerns I have, believe it or not, I'm still using the same computer that Eric Jacobson used. Two thousand and eight, when I was elected, I moved it, I started using that computer. And I, and I can tell you, I can go to some sites that I've never seen before and they're like the QSL assessing. And I, it goes back, and I get assessing records all the way back to about nineteen ninety, when they first started doing things on it. So there are things in there, cause it says user Mike Ridley or Eric Jacobson. I gotta get that taken care of one of these. I think that's what kinda gives me the heebie-jeebies. Was that?
Computer on?
I said, I don't know how you do it. It's the same thing. I, I, everything that Sue ever touched for the last twenty years, I can, it was, you know, I could see.
Well, I don't find any documents or anything questionable or anything like, but I know that it's there.
Well, the problem is, is it transfers over to your name, so it went from Eric Jacobson to now Mike Ridley.
Yeah, I would strongly recommend having an IT person. That we buy you a new computer. What are you doing, using Windows seven?
Yes.
Hey, look, look, you know, I don't wanna steer you, but that is a, that is a security issue.
Well, then that's, that's, well, that's what I made a talk about.
You need to get Windows ten or eleven to get your security up to date.
I'm not sure what it is. I know the laptop has seven on it, so.
Yeah, seven isn't supportable anymore, so it's easy.
Is there some humor in here I'm not seeing?
It's kinda like, yeah, it kinda, Windows seven is like Flintstone era anymore.
I'm not, I'm not an IT expert, but you don't have a digital, that is definitely not a solid-state hard drive. So first, you've got speed issues, secondarily, someday it's gonna die. And, and.
Then you lose everything.
Yeah, our IT people should be coming in and looking at these hard drives out of period.
Okay, so, well, that's, that's a nice.
They, they already have.
If it's not supported, then the problem becomes converting files over to the latest and greatest.
So while we're talking about this.
Digital hard drives are faster and they're cheap.
How many computers do we have with Windows seven on it?
Right, I've got the laptop, that's it. I don't know about that one. I can't know that's been updated maybe ten, or I don't know what's on it.
But your computer, you said you had stuff from Eric Jacobson.
Yes, yes, I do.
So is that computer from two thousand and nine?
Uh, two thousand and eight or seven.
Your.
Laptop.
That's our computer.
Not the laptop, your work.
My work computer.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion when we get to the questions. Okay. I'm gonna start all over again, aren't I?
No, 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 no. IT transfer in there.
In there.
They'll fix you right up. They'll fix you right up.
It actually doesn't stop there. We share, the bandwidth is shared with the police department. We already know that the cost just to increase the bandwidth is ten grand. So Gordon already got a quote for that. And they told us, they told us probably about three months ago, because I was having issues with mine being really slow. That we need to do something, we need to upgrade our server and we need to add bandwidth.
That would be true.
Okay, so, but I will tell you, I did test our speeds. And, I mean, we got more, we got better and we're paying for premier, premium, top-of-the-line speed.
Yeah.
You know, we got one gigabyte upload speed. And a half a gig download speed. That kinda upload speed's kinda unheard of.
But if your computer's not capable, Bob, use that speed.
But that speed's kinda useless.
If you're using Windows seven. Yeah, well, I'm just, I, like I said.
It's got a crank on the side of the computer that keeps it.
No, I got pedals. Um, the, what I use it for is emails, documents, emails, documents. And I, I look at assessing them where I don't.
Yeah, the IT writer will tell us exactly what we should have.
Yeah, you don't want it to die and then you will lose that information.
And frankly, frankly, if anybody else in this building has a Windows seven machine that needs to go.
Yeah.
And is it gonna cost money? Yes, but do we need to do it?
Yes, that's the price of doing business.
Okay, software. Unauthorized use, yeah, don't go in and screw around with the S and A. Here's how you report abuse. Eight twenty-four is really important because it covers obscenity.
Yeah.
Pornographic, discrimination, harassment, and offensive. And I don't think we need to go over this much more because the lawyer's gonna have to tell us all this stuff.
Yeah, I guess my question would be defamatory or threatening, and if you respond to somebody's, and I've had people come in and accuse me of threatening them just because of the nature of the email I responded to.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I don't, I'd be curious about that.
So if it's okay with you, I move that we approve chapter eight as written pending legal review.
Is the motion, is there support?
I support.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. Okay, so what that means is I'm gonna post seven and eight on the internet and then if there's any changes, then change it. Pending legal review. So, chapter nine. You weren't here Tuesday, but I talked to Bobby offline about this. I've had some real good conversations with him. And we saw his report, it's really good, the best one we got, definitely. And I talked to him about all this. At the bottom there where it says emergency plan, they do have an emergency plan. He's gonna get it to me this summer or this spring for me to scan, format, convert, and word, so they can update it. And I went through all of these with him and he said, we can't do it.
I talked to Breezy about that.
Right, and, and I said, so I have to go to this board meeting, what would be reasonable? Because, you know, none of your folks are here that are gonna help you. And I said, would, would the end of the first quarter, which would be September thirtieth, would that be a good deadline for you to have a draft ready? And he said, yes.
I think that's a good, that's a good timeline to get started. I like that.
So what I would do is when we approve chapter nine, the only thing it's gonna say is airport operations to be developed. Well, I'm sorry, to be, I'm changing, to be determined. It's just a placeholder. So, so I move that we approve chapter nine to say nine point O, airport operations to be determined.
Support, is there support?
All second.
Jay supports, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then, chapter ten. I don't know if anybody's seen the chief's fifty-three chapter manual. He's so far ahead of us. So I've had some conversations with him where I was concerned about stuff like bid policy. Right? You know, we don't need to have two bid policies, so he's willing, you know, to follow our lead. However, the second paragraph says, wherever possible. The reason that word is in there is because of the contract and the union.
Correct.
Um, they cannot follow our employee handbook.
Correct.
Because they have a union negotiated thing.
Yeah.
So we don't have to put in here, at first I was talking to him about, well, we'll just exempt, check, exempt the police department from chapter five, for example. Right? Well, this whenever possible covers. The only question I didn't ask him, but I would like to ask him is, is there any reason that we can't post all fifty-four of your chapters on the web? And there may be a reason not to do that. But.
Did you discuss that with him?
No, I haven't asked him. I'm telling you, I haven't asked him that. But unlike this where we've got everything all in one file. He's got it, each chapter in a separate file. But if you, if you're okay with this, do you wanna make any changes?
I don't see any way, anywhere I would change it. Jay?
I know. I'm fine.
Go ahead.
So I move that chapter ten, we accept it as written.
I have a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so just to review before we leave this. Chapter seven and eight will be published along with eight. Chapter seven, eight, nine, and ten will be published. And seven and eight is subject to legal review. Is my understanding.
Correct.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have one thing, I don't need to cherry pick on you.
No, please, go ahead.
I would, I would love to have everybody on the same page about this entire board. And I think one of the things is to have town, general counsel review the entire, after, even we've said anything that we missed. Is there anything that we missed or anything that we missed, was there a misstep? Is there something we need to take in, put in or take out?
Well, let's, let's talk about that for a minute. Chapter three has already been reviewed by him.
Okay, that's, we, that's.
Three and five, well.
And then four, and then four is financial, that's gonna be.
So, so one is one paragraph.
Okay.
That just says, here's our manual.
Yeah.
Correct answer. Read the notebook of interest and ethics.
Hang on. So, chapter one is just a purpose.
Okay.
We don't need him to do that. Chapter two, I see absolutely no reason for him to review that because it's strictly a workflow process. You know, why?
It's how we run our meetings, that's all it is.
Yeah, why waste time and the money? Chapter three, he's already reviewed. Chapter four, we're waiting on the auditor. Now, do you wanna review chapter four with both, both the lawyer and the auditor? Because I think we could just rely on the auditor. But if you feel better, because, you know, chapter four is the biggest chapter.
It's the most complicated.
So what I'm afraid of is then we're gonna have to put the auditor together with the lawyer. I think we should, for four, I think we should rely on our auditor. I don't, I don't think chapter four needs legal review. If, if we have an auditor.
Well, our auditor knows all the laws, the MCLs and stuff, and what they're supposed to do.
And five is, is.
And five is already under review. Okay, so let's go to six. If you wanna review that, I got no problem with that either.
What, I, six.
It's just records.
Oh.
Oh, record retention, things like that.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And, and four.
Okay, well, can we put that, when I want to put that on?
Well, no, so that, hang on, that only leaves chapter six to be legally reviewed. Do you wanna make a motion to have that legally reviewed? Then we're done. Pending legal.
Next, record retention.
Yeah.
We already approved it at the last meeting, but we can make a motion to send this, it's already up online. We can make a motion to send this to the lawyer for legal review.
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I don't have a problem with that.
So, because it's got the new four-year policy and it makes sure that we've covered ourselves on everything on that. And so really, they'd only be, legal would only be reviewing chapter six, seven, and eight.
No, five, six, seven, eight.
Five, five, six, seven.
Five through eight.
Yep.
I don't have a problem with that. That's half. Instead of the whole thing, we cut it down to half.
Wait, would you think you've got your, I don't think the airport police is.
We don't need to do that.
Well, now, when we do get done with the airport, because of the liability problem, we are gonna have to have them review that.
But that won't be till September? When they redo their report.
Correct, correct, correct.
So, so basically, let's review, one is a paragraph that means nothing, two is administrative only, three's already been legally. Three's already been legally reviewed. Right? Four's being taken care of by the auditor. Five, six, seven, eight are gonna be, uh, no, five, seven, eight are gonna be legal reviewed. We can add six to it.
Yeah.
Would you make that motion?
Yeah, I make a motion that we submit, uh, chapter six for legal review.
I second that.
All, all support?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we're covered.
Yeah, anything else.
Everybody's comfortable with it.
Yeah.
And we can move on, we can move on.
I've talked to, uh, to find out where we are with that Trello on MEDC. About what we can upload from this into the Trello to qualify for RRC.
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up. Planning commission. Really, really important that we get them on our budget cycle in that, in their bylaws. And as part of MEDC, they gotta do that capital improvement plan.
Yep, we will.
And so we really, and I know this may be a bridge too far this first year. But it would be really nice to have that by the March, by March 31st. I don't know that you can do that.
We're going to be meeting with Denise in January.
January 26th.
But the county, as, as we followed the county, so it's over 15,000. So it's big items. And, um, the way the county does it, that's why I sent it out, you saw that. You know, they don't prioritize, they just say must have, nice to have. I, I can't remember these.
Yeah, I know each other.
And the law gives the planning commission, by law, the right to go to any department to get that information. So, uh, they can go to parks, parks has to comply. Uh, they can come to the.
DDA.
The DDA, the clerk, clerk, something clerk wants, you know, has to comply. Police department has to comply. But it's only over 15,000, that would probably also, is a car a capital asset?
Aye.
I'm not sure.
May I ask her?
Yes.
Is, is, is a police car a?
Most definitely.
Okay. So that schedule, uh, would be on there.
Okay. Uh, yeah, cause I think that's something we've talked, one of the things they want, the capital improvement in the Trello. And I know that the planning commission.
Right.
I talked to Denise about it as well.
Yeah, it was in, uh, MEDC, chapter four.
Right.
And the other thing in MEDC, chapter four, is an annual report. Even if it's just one page, the law doesn't specify. Uh, it's in their bylaws that Mike gave to me. Uh, I would suggest that you just give that to the board at the end of the fiscal year.
Correct.
Like June 30th. And if we could do that, because if we don't have a CIP, there's no sense in, uh, going forward and trying to get a strategic plan that's required by the, by chapter four. Yeah, it's required by chapter four and it's required by MEDC. So, you know, if we're gonna bring in that, uh, Michigan State Extension Service God to teach us, the planning commission, um, the parks commission, the police chief, our entire staff on how to get ready to do a strategic plan and how to do it. We gotta have all this other stuff in place first.
That though.
So in other words, you know, if, if we'd be wasting a lot of people's time if you started working on a strategic plan next year.
You gotta get that public input plan, how you're gonna get people together, where you're gonna draw them from.
Right, so, you know, in fact, I have checked.
Are you looking for MEDC?
Yeah. And I know we're taking up a lot of time, but this is very valuable, at least to me. Okay, so I'm looking at this MEDC thing. Uh, master plan's gonna be updated, it's yellow. Well, it'll be green sooner, right? Uh, and then one, three, uh, will be green as soon as they do the CIP.
Right.
And the community has a public partition plan for engaging a diversity set of, of community stakeholders. Right? That one you're gonna have to ask about.
Right.
I'm not quite sure what that means.
Well, we, we started working, uh, just the idea of how to get a survey out. Uh, we hit all these websites and all these Facebook friends and.
Yeah, but they wanna document a documented plan.
Well, we will, we will.
Could you get a sample?
Uh, yeah, okay, we can go on from Denise, cause I think she worked with that too.
What's that?
The, it's, it's a, a public, uh, participation plan. How do you draw people in as stakeholders and, and where do you go? How, what do you, you know?
Um, and then we go to three.
What kind of strategic plan over there?
I don't know. I've seen that too, now.
What I don't understand is the community has clearly identified point of contact for development review activities. Why is that yellow? Isn't that the planning commission?
Geez, I, you know, I can't tell you, I don't know. Be honest with you, I don't know, but that would be the, the, the identified, because some people would approach the DDA.
It could be citizen task force.
It could be a citizen staff or it could be the DDA.
Could be a lot of different things.
They could go to the park.
It could be.
They're saying one point of contact.
Yeah, one point of contact.
You might wanna ask them, so what do you want us to have to make that go green?
Yeah.
Do we just need a simple one-page policy letter that says that the supervisor's a single point of contact for development? Uh, depending on, uh, what the subject is, he'll send them to plannings, parks, DDA.
I think.
The community has a clearly documented internal staff. For development. Isn't a lot of this based on if we had zoning?
Uh, I don't know about that. That sounds like we have larger, larger employee forces.
Isn't that DDA actually?
Read that again, the community.
The community has a clearly documented internal staff review policy for processing development applications. I don't even know what a development application is.
Well, I guess you don't let it be that.
If somebody has a building, wants to do a building, they, they go to the county.
Right, correct.
So that may not apply to us because we don't have a zoning.
And I'm like, so why aren't, the more I look at this, I'm, well, why is this yellow? Why isn't this green if it's done at the county? Especially in chapter two about zoning. We don't have zoning. Every one of these are.
But we do have zoning. We, we have, we have adopted the county zoning, so therefore we do have zoning.
So my question would be, why aren't all those green? And then here's another one. The community maintains a fee schedule. Well, for what? Uh, development related.
Yeah.
And then how to pay for development related fees? And then ensure the meeting schedule for development related blah, blah, blah.
Well, that may not apply to us.
So, so what I, what I'm getting at is I think that we're, unless I'm missing something here, uh.
We got a lot more green than.
We got a lot more green.
I'm, I'm, I'm meeting with Lindsay this week, so, um, from MEDC and I'll go over all that and try and have an answer.
Yeah, because we do have zoning, we just have adopted the county zoning.
Okay, so let's go to four one. The community has a clear recruitment and appointment process. We, we have it now, it's at the end of chapter two. Um, and that's an MEDC requirement. Do you, does this board want me to go ahead and strip that out and put it online?
Uh, just get it to me because I gotta talk to him, how do we upload these, how do we put them to the, something that's required.
Yeah, but once I, once, once I take the back part, you know, where, where it said about, uh, applying for board or commission.
Yeah.
Or task force. Uh, the reason that we left that in there, we initially took it out, but we left it in here because of this.
Because of that, yeah.
Well, that's why I put the, or the announcement for a board review.
Right, so, so, so do you want me to strip that out and send it to you?
Let me, let's talk about it after I talk to, to.
Okay, alright, then get back to me. And, uh, incorporate board, commission members, exceptions, online or within application. That's already there. So the minute we post that online, four one and four two have to go green, in my opinion. Prepare and share, prepare and share orientation materials for new boards and commissions. Well, guess what? When we get this policy book totally done, that has to go green. Because, uh, let's say we have a new DDA person. Here's the book. Uh, come on into the office, why don't you read it and then come on into the office and you or Kramer or somebody, uh, the clerk or, or Janet will go through it with you. And that is their orientation, so that oughta go green. Post respective bylaws, rules of procedure for boards and commissions. Now, I know that we have planning. And I can post those when you give me.
DDA has.
And DDA, but I don't know about parks, so. Parks probably needs to have one. And then we already talked about the annual report. But this is, this last one's really the hard one. Develop a comprehensive training strategy for, uh, boards and commissions. I mean, we got all these volunteers, they don't have the time. A lot of them run businesses with their families. I think if you could talk to MEDC is like, how do other communities that are small do this and meet the requirement?
Yeah, I did talk to Lindsay yesterday for a while about this because they have a program called the, uh, the fellow program. And they, you actually take a, uh, an intern that's getting into, uh, municipal planning. On, as, and it's, it's $10,000 for 12 or 15 months. And they come in and they help you get all these set up, and we're a little premature for it right now. But it was something that, that's how, they tell you how to, how to do this.
So who is that again now?
This is the fellow program through MEDC. And I talked to Lindsay, I said, do you think this is worth bringing to the board? As they assign an individual to come to your community, this is what Shaboygan did, uh, several communities do this. They have a person that directly works with them, develop, uh, develop for MEDC, probably with things like this.
Programs, training programs and stuff like that?
Yeah, but we're a little premature, she said.
Yeah, because we gotta get a lot of this done.
A lot of that done.
So if we get some of this done, then we might be ready.
I would think so, if that's, if the board decides to go that way, because it's an investment. But it, you're, you're getting a full time.
We already voted on MEDC, we're either gonna do it or we're not.
No, this is something totally different than, than the RRC. This just comes in and helps you, like, like, for instance, I made an appointment for next week with, uh, individuals who wanna redevelop their, their, uh, their, their project. That person would be the person that was sitting down with MEDC and would, as MEDC and the individuals. They specifically, I don't have all, I don't have enough of, of the, uh, information, background information on it to, to, to speak and tell it to me about everything. It was just a program, I, when I asked her, I said, she said, you're just a little premature. That's all.
Premature and that we're not advancing it with these yellows?
Yeah, but I was thinking one of those things is, is that, because that does, I mean. That's gonna be something I would probably talk to Denise.
Alright, so let me answer this, cause I'm planning dumb here, cause I don't, I know excellence, but I don't know this. If all of this goes green, what's, what's that mean for us?
We just become, uh, we're actually, the whole idea of making your RRC essentials, we would be the essentials grade, not certified grade, because we don't have our own zoning. We'd become the essentials. It's when an individual comes to our town and, and looks, and MEDC, they see we're a reinvestment ready community. We've got all these things to set up, some more set up for the individuals to come to our community and say, okay, you've got all these things ready to go. This would be a great, a great community to, to, to develop something and to develop a business.
Yeah, but how's that gonna help them or us get grants and loans?
Well, we're already right there, we're, we're already at a point where we can apply for grants and loans.
Us or the business?
Businesses. Yeah. I say, I say us, I mean collective.
Okay, so let's say that there's a, a guy that wants to, uh, put in a PUD.
Jay.
Right, with 10 minutes.
Right.
Would that person be able to get some money out of MEDC?
Right now. That's, we got two, we got, uh, two people working on it right now.
Oh, uh, about the laundromat?
Nope, this is something, this, this is not a development, this is more, they have the housing, they have, uh, the businesses, the combination of businesses, it's a, a mixed use development thing. And, uh, and they're, but they've been leaning really heavy, and Cheryl probably tell us Tuesday, uh, leaning very, very heavily toward housing because it just isn't.
Chris was telling me that if he bought a building and put a laundromat in the bottom and, and a, a housing unit on top or, uh, behind, they'd pay 50% of it, that was the expense.
Correct.
I don't know, I'd never want to live above a laundromat, but it'd be pretty hot. Okay, well, I, I'm sorry to take it, so, okay. I'm just trying to tie the two together.
Yep, where, where are we next?
I think we've hit a lot of the marks though that Mike needed for the MEDC program. And I think it's working well together, coming together like we had hoped it would. So between the tunnel for business and the MEDC program, so I, I'm encouraged.
What is the next, uh, item on the?
Audit CPA.
Well, we, after personnel action.
Oh, yeah, personnel.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to hire an administrative assistant, provide him with, uh, computer software and software, phone. And pursue candidate for that position.
Pursue a candidate?
Yeah, through the, through job application process.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Ah, hang on. Can we discuss this?
Yep.
How many hours?
Right now, right now, we're looking at probably 32 hours.
About 25? Where's the money gonna go?
We're working on that.
Aren't we 100 and? You just issued that report that I saw, um, in the board packet. And the one that I saw online, I mean, last year alone, we had $132,000 under, underspent compared to revenue. Bobby's concern was, show me the money. I think that if you review the documents, the money is clear. It, it's clear, we can afford it. If you're $132,000 underspent.
We have six months yet to go.
Out of, out of the last fiscal year, revenue versus expenditures, we had $132,000 left over. Our general fund balance after this audit ought to exceed $70,000.
Are, are you stating that's what the money is, the money is in the general fund you're referring to?
You have to pay for it.
Yes, yeah, I'll, I'll be coming back with a recommendation of where the money is and what we need to do with it, correct?
So in other words, you're, you're not, you're not proposing any budget adjustments at this time?
At this time, no.
I'm good.
Okay, any more discussion? Motion we have support, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What was? Okay, audit CPA?
I don't have anything.
Nothing.
Budget adjustments?
I don't wanna make a budget adjustment, but I wanna talk about it.
Who, I'm sorry, can we go back to the audit CPA?
Yes, yes, sir.
You know, Mike was not here during some of our meetings, I just wanna make sure I had shared that, talked to Joe Berlin. And that he thought he'd be done with the audit by the 23rd December or earlier. And that he'd be prepared to come in on a January 3rd, uh, board meeting. Uh, either by Zoom or with having Andrew present in person the results. Right? And so I just wanna make sure you were aware of that.
Maybe I was.
Okay.
Oh, do we need, do we need to decide which we wanna go, or is it going to, you have to Joe Berlin on how that's gonna happen?
I'd invite you, whether dependent at that time.
Yeah. We can decide today if, uh, if we like, or we can wait until the board meeting.
Decide what?
Whether we're gonna have Andrew do it or Joe Berlin do it by Zoom. I mean, it's a matter of just having someone do it in person or by Zoom. And, and I don't know if we need to even make that, I think maybe we leave it up to Joe.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be his ball, because if it's a, you know, trapping a travel or a schedule to our Andrew, they're gonna charge us money.
Either way.
Yeah. If it was up to me, I'd like to see him sitting right in front of me. It's like a tall face.
Face to face.
Yeah? Not Joe, the other guy.
Andrew.
Cause Joe said, Joe wouldn't come, right?
Is, is there a motion?
No, I'm just, I'm just.
I think Joe wouldn't come.
I'd like to move that we have in person.
Requesting in person.
Okay. Uh, no matter who. I still think we kinda can request it, but I think we should kinda leave it to them.
Yeah, I think we should leave it to them, cause it, it could be weather permitting, scheduling, they have other communities.
So I make the, I make the motion that we request, uh, that they brief us in person.
We have to, we have to do something, this is totally, we gotta do something about our, our, our tech, technology. So that we can have a big screen and have things like this and dependable things.
I have a solution for that, but not now.
Okay.
I'll talk about it.
Okay, we request that. Okay, we request that, he, we prefer a.
We request, the motion is, we request an in-person briefing on the audit at the January meeting.
That is the, that is the, we request.
Yeah, if possible, yeah.
If possible?
Yeah.
Wait, was that your, if possible?
Request an in-person meeting, all we're doing is requesting.
That's true.
Get your support?
I support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else in audit? Okay, so, after talking with Andy, apparently in 20, this is budget adjustments, apparently in 2018 or 2019, when they inspected the runway, they, I think you know this, I wanna say this better. There's, we have a serious, serious problem with a lack of lines and a lack of numbers.
It's a safety issue.
Right, but before you can put down the line and the numbers, you gotta do seal code. He has enough for the seal codes, if I understood it correctly, but he doesn't have enough in his budget, the 75 or $8,000 that he needs for the paint and the numbers. So the question is, do we wanna make that budget adjustment now? Or do we want him to come in with a formal letter, which probably might be better?
Because they're not gonna be doing any of that until spring.
Correct.
Yeah.
And then just get it on the agenda maybe?
I think, I think having him come in and explain what's going on.
He'll be your Tuesday.
He's gonna be gone.
Okay, well, then do a report?
He'll be your Tuesday? You and Chris?
No. Not that I know of.
Okay.
Then he just did a report, I, I think we need, I think we need to.
Why don't I just talk to him and say, look, if you can't come in, so we can put you on the agenda, just send us something detailed in writing with exactly how much money you're asking.
So we know exactly what we're voting on, I would prefer that.
Yeah, you just gotta make a form call.
So.
Housekeeping?
No, I'm still on budget adjustments. I really want to authorize the funds to replace Mike's two computers immediately.
Just one computer?
We have a laptop.
Have a laptop that I, it's so outdated, all I do.
Exactly, but you need, if, if, if you wanna have better technology in here, you need a laptop.
That's gonna be able to.
That might be in my budget, I'm not sure.
It's not.
It's not?
It's not.
Because I haven't bought anything in years.
It's not.
I bought a chair last year.
What's in the budget?
For example.
What's in the budget for equipment, because I think it is in your budget, we just.
Not under the supervisor line.
There should be something for equipment.
Yeah, there is, but it's not in our present. So anyway, taking a look over here, Mike, for example, what you were talking about.
1,200 dollars, 1,200 dollars.
The technology.
That would be out of this budget.
We got two.
What's there?
1,200 is in his budget, yeah, so you've got more.
Excuse me, if, if we've got two 80-inch inexpensive screens, right, or even one.
We can start with one.
You start with one, because, you know, in my world, if you're gonna have that thing on all the time, it's very expensive, because you have to have a special, heavy-duty power supply. We need a bathroom in the music business, so in other words, you can't buy a consumer model if you're gonna have it on all the time, if you're gonna use it for a display in the lobby, for example. But because we're only gonna need to have this on during our meetings, you can go to Walmart.
Yeah.
And as long as it has an HDMI output of your computer and an HDMI, we can take that thing down and put up an 80, and you're golden, you just gotta rearrange the room. So people walk in here and these are over there. And, and we don't have to do that right now, I'm just giving you a solution. I mean, you're talking maybe, after you get your computer, I'll bet you we could do it for under 1,500 bucks. Because all we have to do is buy a wall mount and some wiring.
And my brother's an IT guy, he volunteered his time to help set this up, so we can do that like this.
We have a great IT guy right there, too, too.
Yeah, that too, yeah.
You don't even have to do that, you, I would, if I, for me, I would have one on wheels, on a, that he could move around.
That's a good idea, too.
What's that?
Just put one on wheels in the store. Okay, we'll, we'll proceed with that, but right now, let's see, you want, you want a motion?
To motion to replace your two computers to.
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed $7,000.
Oh, I'm like, how?
We, we don't know what it's gonna cost. Laptops, the laptop you need is gonna cost at least 1,500 bucks.
Yeah, that's true.
And then you're gonna need something, I mean, if you wanna make it five, that's fine, but you're gonna go to IT Right, they're gonna tell you exactly what to buy and what we need, and they will order it, and you can buy it from them. I, I just don't want you to have to come back to the board.
I don't want you to have to go to Walmart either to get what you need, because you need to have.
So in other words, if it's $5,500, I don't want you to have to come back to us.
I, I, I think it's a highly inflated number, I don't think we need that much, but I guess you don't wanna.
But if it's not to exceed, so if you can get a deal and get us $3,000, I'm good with that, you know?
But, but now, in addition, Mike, to your, your laptop and your desktop, you need a new monitor.
That, and also.
That monitor's gotta go.
You're gonna have to pay to transfer all this stuff to make sure that it all gets over to your.
I know, I count on IT Right having to, to switch everything over.
Right, so, I mean, all this is gonna add up onto the bill.
Okay, well.
That's why I said.
I will do, I will do my best to keep that number well under 7,000.
Okay, trade your hamster in.
Does that include the video screen too?
No, no, just his two computers and the setup that it's gonna take, if you need a monitor, whatever, whatever you need to bring you up to like at least 2020 or something.
And I would also encourage you as the supervisor, wait, did we get a second?
I seconded it.
Okay, I would encourage you as the supervisor to consider dual screens like.
Like the clerk.
I just haven't found a lot of necessity to do that, I don't know what.
But he can always, he can always have that later if he comes.
Okay.
But if he's got the new computer and the new access and all that kind of stuff in his laptop, he pretty much has two screens if he has his laptop.
Well, what I, the way I saw Laura working, it really worked out really well.
It did, yeah.
You can have assessing, a drawing on one screen and your, your data on the other, but that's up to you, but.
But you can always go to that.
But you can get two screens right off the bat, because you wanna get the right computer to start with that has dual screen capability.
Right.
So you could ask them, hey, we wanna make sure that it has dual, not your laptop, but the other one, has dual screen capability, and we want an up-to-date monitor that you're not straining your eyes.
Can you restate the motion?
I, I, I move that we authorize the supervisor to spend up to 7,500 dollars for laptop, monitor, and new workstation. Monitors plural.
And support was Janet?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Merry Christmas.
So, do you know of any other machines? Like Bobby's got a new computer, correct?
Yeah.
How about the, how about the assessor?
I think.
That's new.
That's new.
Okay, is there anyone, is there anyone else with Windows 7, I guess is my question?
I don't know, I don't have Windows 7, but.
You need it upgraded?
I don't know if it's, yeah.
It needs an upgrade.
Yeah, it needs an upgrade, I mean, it's slow, but, you know, partly due to.
Well, maybe we can have IT Right evaluate, is why they're here working on yours.
Well, their pioneers evaluated, and could you ask them to please evaluate the server? No, no motion here, we're just asking.
So this is, this is conversation?
Yeah. So in other words, whoever calls IT Right, say, look, I need a, a new laptop capable of doing Zoom with a, with a really.
New PC?
Yeah, a new PC.
New monitors.
And you want a dual-screen capable, and then we want you to move the data over for us.
And while you're here.
And while you're here, evaluate the clerk's machine and the server.
Now, the server evaluated that, that would be like checking the bandwidth and see that kind of thing, that would be different?
I think, that server's been here quite a while, they may recommend an upgrade, do a new machine. You know, you can have the most screened network in the world, if the machines don't.
Okay, any more budget adjustments?
Okay, I'll stop you, we only have one.
Just the one for the dual-screen, new monitors, two new computers, 7,500.
Housekeeping?
I don't have any.
I don't have anything for that.
Uh, no.
Okay, citizens comments? Yes, sir.
This is getting to become, but I would make a recommendation to the board under equipment policy, that any storage devices, memory, hard drives be removed from the computers before they're disposed of. Information can be retrieved too easily if you just.
And properly destroyed, correct, I'm sorry.
Correct. Because one NSA study, just now, this is back in the late 70s when I was, they would take their discs out of the removal disc pack when they were about, they'd be, they'd send them through a cross shredder and got pieces about a 16th by an eighth of an inch. And they could extract 811 pages of text from that small piece of left, so there's a lot of information stored on that, so you've got to destroy it. And then they burned it after they'd shredded it.
Can we request IT to make sure that that stuff is taken care of when they.
Thanks, Pat, and thank you, Mr. McGinnis.
As a question, if they can handle that for us, right? Because they're gonna turn it.
I, I remember, you know, when we had classified machines that we were turning in, oh my God, the instructions that they had to go away, whether they had classifieds. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead. I've just gone through an upgrade of the server that we have in our office, it was about eight years old, some of it is hardware, some of it is software. Your machine, I'm pretty sure is not going to take an upgrade past whatever operating system it has, sometimes you can fix that just with hard drives, please rely on your IT people. If you're not doing that full-time, it's, it's just too difficult to keep up with how things can get managed. Fixed asset list from the auditor, that is not going to cover you for insurance, so they do it for what they knew, is if you look around this room, you've got probably $5,000 to $10,000 worth of throwaways. By throwaways, I mean, this table's not on their schedule, it costs 50 bucks, these chairs are not on their schedule, they probably cost 50 bucks a piece. But if you add all of that up in this room, that's something that you would definitely want to recoup on an insurance claim, but you can't rely on the auditors to do that. So the auditor's list is a start, it works for them, it's not gonna work for you. And social media, when you're thinking about taking people out of the system, you gotta remember that sometimes you have disgruntled employees and on their way out the door, they say things. So it's not necessarily about day-to-day operations, it's what do you need to do in the worst-case scenario? If you look at the Fed policy, they have a, a pretty robust group of people who manage it, it's the chief information person, whoever's in charge of IT. It's the chief communications officer, whoever that is, the chief privacy officer, who's ever in charge of personal identifying information, and their general counsel, so. I'm not suggesting that you have four people, but you have people who are in charge of that subject matter, and those are the people that you should probably have weigh in on who needs to be removed from access for that. And, you know, my comment about getting the blessing from the attorney on the handbook is, we got the quote for the one chapter from the auditor, and that was, in my opinion, a very reasonable price. So, you know, before we spend a lot of time talking about what to not have him look at, figure out what he, you know, ask him what he wants to look at the whole thing, I just assume you have somebody's signature and their license on the line for any risk or litigation that came from something that was missed in the handbook, right? If you're gonna make an investment, let's, let's make it. That's all I really, oh, last comment, Andrew, I don't know who he is, I know Joe's a partner, so I know his billing rate is here, and I guess Andrew's billing rate is there. So the offset is travel time, you may end up paying the same for Joe to be online versus Andrew to be here, billing rates.
Can I respond to that? Mr. Joe?
Yes.
What, what was the one right before Joe, you were talking about?
Oh, just about having the attorney sign off on the.
So are you saying that chapter four should be reviewed by the auditor and the attorney?
I, I wouldn't say that the, that, that I would assume that the attorney would have much to say, there are some attorneys who would, I know attorneys who are also CPAs who might weigh in on chapter four. But I wouldn't exclude that from legal review without knowing how much it would cost me to have him review it. If he's, if he's saying, look, whether I review three chapters or the whole thing, the difference in price is $200, I want him to review the whole thing. Only because then I, then I have two people I can beat up when we get in trouble for missing something, right?
And she likes doing that.
Thank you, Janet.
Okay, other comments?
You guys opened a whole bunch of can of worms today, and I'm gonna dump it out and kick it around, try to be quick.
Got three minutes.
So as a trustee from the Sportsman's Club, on Black Friday, we ordered a new laptop for the treasure from Micro Center Downstate. It's a 16-inch Dell with 16 gig of memory and a 5-12 solid-state drive, it was $900. You might consider a Docker setup and only buying one computer and having a Docker for your desk with dual monitors. We really need the auditor here in person, we are the client. We really need the auditor here in person, we are the client. If this, if this Andrew person, does he have a license? If he doesn't have a license, what good is he? Why even have him here, and I don't know if he has a license or not, I've heard he does not. So somebody with a license needs to be here in the room, we are the client. Fully support the office assistant, need five days a week, eight, nine hours a day for the office to be open. Police department manual is foiable already, so what would the objection possibly be to having it online? Don't know. On our break, I ran in the library and ran a speed test, it was 46 meg down, not 400 meg, 46 meg. At home, we're paying for 100 meg spectrum, we get 300. Now, your rate is different because you're commercial, but something to look at. You know, capital improvement, you're talking about IT upgrades, that's a global thing, I mean, absolutely, you are well overdue for, for a new computer. But that's a bigger integrated discussion when you talk about off-site storage and things like emergency management. As a township, I don't believe you have a contingency plan for off-site operations, what if the building burns down? What if it floods? Where do you go? Where do you set up operations? Private industry has business continuity insurance, you don't, so that's a whole big discussion. The county has their own emergency manager, it's a lieutenant with the sheriff's department, as you all remember, Dale broke away from the CCE thing, so Sheboygan County's on its own. That really needs to be a conference with Gordon, with Dave, with the emergency manager. There's an organization called the International Association of Emergency Managers, there are 3,092 people in the country with that national certification. In Michigan, I was number six in 1995. It's a big deal, okay? You have the State's Record Retention Act, it's kind of like Sorban's Oxley in the private industry, are we doing it? I mean, I know we just passed it the other day, but, you know, we have a standard that we have to hold up to. Again, the FOIA issue that Mr. McGinnis and I have kind of touched on the last couple of meetings, your FOIA policy should mandate no personal emails to your township addresses, period, the end. And maybe you just have a canned response that says, hey, received your email, this doesn't meet our, our township email policy, please send it to michiganman@gmail.com, you know, whatever. Social media, you gotta remember the difference between third-party social media and government-owned social media. So if you had a place for public comment on your township website, that's a totally different standard than people making comments on our Facebook page, or Instagram, or anywhere else. There's case law on that, it may be changing in the Musk era. There's case law on that. It may be changing in the Musk era, considering what Twitter has previously done to Trump. But the sitting president was banned from social media. So that's all up in the air, you know? And, and your eight-sixteen chapter, use of township computers by employees, needs to be very detailed. That, you know, is it okay for you to go to Amazon and order stuff on lunch? Probably. Is it okay for you to gamble online? Probably not. Is it okay for you to go to online dating? Absolutely not. So you kinda gotta be a little specific with that. You're talking about legal review. You're changing attorneys. So how much do you wanna send this current attorney, and how much do you wanna hold off until they can review the whole policy with whoever the ongoing counsel is going to be? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so a couple of things, and some of it's gonna be redundant. Legal review.
Can you come up here? I can hardly hear you.
I have a bit of a voice.
I wanna help you with that.
I think that's a compliment.
I can yell. Okay.
Is it sitting down?
Hold it down.
There, there, it's on. Okay, so legal review. I've had a couple of calls personally this week from people who are volunteers, who are concerned about what's in the language. I think it needs to go to legal review, because they're worried about it, and I've seen some think that they're better than right, they could potentially do harm to people. So I think, I think the whole policy should go to legal review. VC Three, IT Right, I think you need to get a quote. Look for somebody else. Their service has gone downhill the last few months since they switched over. They're not very responsive. I actually did all my upgrades myself. The monitor, I have a new monitor in that office that I did, I hooked up myself. Ordered a couple hundred dollars, I think it was three hundred bucks, and hooked up myself, because we needed another, another monitor, so that... I'm with you on the nine hundred dollars. I think we spent six on the assessor's computer, laptop, and it's hooked up and running fine with our server. I wanted to talk a little bit about Terry. I heard, I heard Clayton say that she kinda was bouncing around. That's not true. The bouncing around was she was working elections. She was certified to work elections. Her pay came out of the election GL line, so I wanted to make sure that that's understood. That anytime she was bouncing around, she was working elections for us.
Can I respond to that? Hang to me.
What?
Can I respond to that? Hang tight. Could you stand on IT Right, please?
Well, anytime I've called for help, for one thing, I mentioned to Jay that any, they're supposed to upgrade our system on the first of the month and the fifteenth of the month. They do an overnight batch update. That doesn't happen all the time. So I end up coming in on the second and not being able to get into anything, and I spend three hours on the phone with IT Right and BS May trying to get it fixed.
Really?
Yeah. IT Right has not had a solution, other than to say, "Well, we think your CPU needs to be replaced, but we're not sure." And they don't call back right away, so I might not be able to work for half a day.
Isn't that a change from a year ago?
It is, because IT Right has taken over by a new company. It's not IT Right anymore. It's VC Three.
It's what?
VC Three.
VC Three.
Victor Charlie?
Yeah.
Done's correct, I hope.
Yeah, so I would, I would say, maybe it's time...
Do you know of any other?
I would call other townships. I mean, call, you know, call the county, find out who they use. Call Benton or Immunist, find out who they're using, and if they're satisfied or not. I would look, I would do some, a little bit of benchmarking, and then go out for quote.
Call the county. Those two guys are wizards, as I can tell. Um, let, let me ask you this. They, they basically said it could be your CPU, but then they didn't... I mean, can't they remote in and look?
Yeah, he was remoted in.
And he still couldn't?
And now he can, yeah, tell me what was really wrong. And it appears that it might be your CPU. Well, that's, that, I'm not used to that. I'm used to somebody remoting in and actually doing something. So it wasn't very helpful. And then, like I said, I spent hours online with these guys trying to get the system rebooted to the, the new iteration, which was ridiculous. So it's been something that I'm gonna talk about anyway, but now probably is the time to do it.
Do you, or you know what our contract within is? Is it...
I do not know it.
It's an, I think it's an annual contract. You'd have to go back and look. It's probably coming due, I'm, I'm gonna say somewhere around the June timeframe.
Sounds to me like we can't wait to have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Any more public comment? Board comments?
Yeah, I have a few. Laptop. Please don't scrimp on the laptop. If we're gonna use your laptop out here, right, don't get a cheap one. Get one with a high-speed, very good video card. Tell them you're gonna use it for projection and, and Zoom and, and what have you. But Ron's right about the library. When I measured the li, library, it was only eight meg down and eight meg up. On the wire, on our wire, on Laura's computer, was five hundred meg down and one gig up, which is extremely good. And then we have two Husker township wireless channels that are encrypted, and I measured both of those, and they are four hundred and fifty meg up and four hundred and fifty meg down. So that's really good as well. So if you're using the library to do your work, don't.
Do we even know if they're the same system on the same ISP, or do they, are they different?
Different.
Yeah, okay.
Because I went in there, I checked the equipment in the room. Oh, by the way, if we do do IT...
I mean, that even for public access, that's awful.
If we do do IT Right, you might wanna take a look at replacing that router, the one with the two little antennas. It's getting overheated. It's, it's really kinda too warm for my liking. But I'm not, but I'm not an expert.
I'm gonna figure that one out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, I have one more comment. I'm sorry. I, I just wanna publicly thank you, you, and especially Laura, again, publicly. She was in here at, what, eight o'clock in the morning?
Eight thirty.
And didn't leave until five and took no breaks, and we would've never got that agenda out. So I thought it was gonna take us three months to get there, and she got us there real quick. So I just wanted to publicly acknowledge your success.
I just wanna thank the board and, and the citizens as well. We're moving record pace with this Township of Excellence, but I think it's creating the foundation that we were in need of and, and realized we had to have, but just didn't get there yet for some reason. But I appreciate everybody's hard work on this. Bob and I have been working on it for probably six, seven months. And, but the speed that we're doing this on and, and the cooperation we're getting from everybody, I really appreciate, because we're far ahead of what I expected to be at this point. So, and, and to know that it's helping with the MADC program, that rural recovery, that program, and, and how far ahead we are because of this, on that as well, is really encouraging. So I, I just wanted to make sure everybody knows how much I appreciate their hard work on this.
The only thing I wanna say is, I agree with Bob that Laura has a lot of potential. So we're gonna continue to investigate, see what Laura can do and how she can help us, and obviously she'll be considered for the administrative, administrative assistant job as well.
Okay. More comments? Our motion to adjourn? All in favor? Aye. Thank you, folks. Thank you very much for giving us part of your Saturday.